Really is the receptionist, so we always put that immediately adjacent. We always put a lot of visibility, so when there is a sick child, that they're not far. Not trying to look around a corner to see if the kid's doing all right. They're right there. And then a restroom facility for that is always needed as part of the health facility. The next item I'm going to show you is the library, which again is right below the admin. Trying to center it up a little more within the classroom. And the library again is on the upper side. We basically combined that with the restroom facility that we wanted to put there in terms of the building. We both have staff restrooms and student restrooms. The student restrooms are on the right because that's a playground side, so we wanted those immediately accessible to the playground. MDF is essentially our data facility because we're bringing it's the brains. We have to find a place to put the brains of all the data and computers in the school, and that's where we put it. The next one is a multipurpose room, and again, it's probably the two most public buildings right at the face of the drop-off. And that's what I'll show you now, essentially the multipurpose room. And we have an exterior lunch shelter that extends out into the playground area, which is below, so we don't have to build and condition overall space because we do have a budget, obviously. But it gives us a chance to put a canopy in, so in those inclement days when it rains or whatever, you can really expand the number of students you can house and feed during a lunch hour, and they don't have to feel like they're confined into a classroom. So basically, we have two sides of this. One is the PE facility. We're replacing the locker shower complex that exists in the campus that we're taking out. And then again, we have the food service, and there's a service area back in here. We have a wall that basically screens that service area. It feeds, obviously, into the multipurpose room. And we always like to put the band room, another room, right off of the stage, so that essentially, you know, your music program and other performing arts-type program are immediately adjacent to the stage. And then a storage area up at the top for all of their things to store and whatnot. So, very basic concept that kind of serves them better, hopefully, than they've been served before. And then, of course, at the bottom, which is the first phase but last in this cluster of presentation, is the classrooms. The mint color green, however you want to classify it, is the basic regular classroom sizes, pretty standard. Then we have an oversized science classroom up here that we've accommodated, and another oversized classroom down here for, you know, there are times where the school needs an oversized classroom for curricular needs, and it varies from what it might be any time, so we added that. The other thing, too, I wanted to mention is this all lines up with the circulation of the existing campus, so we're really on access. And this is intended to just fit right into the campus, so functionally, you don't feel like you're having to bend around a corner to get somewhere, both for supervision sightlines as well as just general circulation. And that's the overall plan. Again, the yellow-colored or orange tangerine, whatever, are the new facilities replacing old, and these are the original now-to-be refurbished facilities. Okay? Now I'm going to show you essentially the architecture that we've layered on. And again, the idea is Susan B. Anthony in the background, the policy to gym which we built was, which was built to basically reflect Susan B. Anthony, and all feel cohesive. Now we're just kind of taking that architecture down the hill, so to speak, at least topographically, to the main campus of policy to, again, Colma Elementary here, the old Colma. The new classrooms, the existing wings to remain, and the new structures here. And that's what it looks like now going up. Market, and that's what we're looking at now.
Nice.
Which is Susan B. Anthony up on the hillside, again, the policy to gym. This is the existing wing right here, which we'll do some things with color. Color does a lot. We're tying things together. This is a new administration facility right here. You can kind of see the peek-a-boo here for the library. It's kind of peeking over the top of the existing wing. And now the new multipurpose room facility just beyond the administration there in the corner. Again, a couple of things, not to get too esoteric, but we wanted the feel of the entry to not be so rigid, so, you know, there's a natural progression of driving in, which is curvilinear, a little organic, as we would say in architecture. And we wanted to have that nice feel that you're feeling welcome by that nice sweeping curve that brings you kind of both visually as well as vehicularly into that. We see this as a big, long drop-off area, pickup area that's off the street. Right now, you're doing that on the street. Again, that's why we met with the city staff to talk about that. The parking, as you can see, striped along through here. And again, this is kind of a non-embellished rendering. You know, there will be eventually some landscape we would be throwing in other things, but this gives you a pretty good feel for it. Okay? An overall bird's-eye perspective with the new classroom wings in the back, and again, the existing classroom wings here. It gives you a little easier view of the library that sits just beyond, now that I'm losing my pointer, right in here. And we wanted the library to both kind of tie into the front of the campus but tie into the existing buildings, because it's really positioned next to the existing buildings. So we did some things that were simple, like take the pitch of the roof, match the existing buildings, as well as some of the window fenestration and other things, so you kind of make it look like it's not quite the same pants and ties, but you can kind of put them together and they fit, you know? So that was the idea. Another perspective, again, I want to show you essentially the perspective of the entry point. And again, this is the entry point with Susan B. Anthony in the background. The main entry for the students essentially on the right through the classroom wings, and that's where, again, the, you go right through the new canopy, and to the left is the admin, so they can kind of keep track of people coming and going. We also have an entry point on the left, which is kind of an after-hours and during, you know, the morning and evening after-school type exit entry point, which is the entry point between the multipurpose room and the administration building. And that one, we think, can, you know, it can be either gated off in the evening or however you want to do it, but it's really where the public would go for after-hours. We didn't want to have to take them through the campus, which is a little bit how they have to get there now. We want them to just go into kind of a welcome feeling and feel like they're right where they need to go without having to go through a campus and find it. We always like those public things up front. And again, so we have two entry points at the front. Another view of that, again, you know, mimicking the bit of the architecture of Susan B. Anthony, where we got the canopy, the library, again, sitting right behind the administration, the multipurpose room, the play area on the backside here. And again, I think we actually increased the hardtop area by several thousand square feet. We kind of made the campus a little more efficient when we moved things around. So we feel pretty good that we have a good hardtop area that will serve the kids well in their break time, as well as a good positioning of the multipurpose room. Now the band room, as I mentioned, would sit probably right about there, the staff room, the principal's office, and conference room. Couple of other little things, and I can go into detail all night long, so I'll stop real quick, but we wanted to make sure the principal and the office could actually see what's going on in the front of the school. That's always something we try to achieve, but not feel like they're in a fishbowl. So, so we give them that viewport, but also give them a little distance. Right, Brent?
(laughing).
Everybody can play guppy. So anyways, that's some of the things we've kind of done up front that we think are important to note. And again, a little steeper view with the new classroom wings in the back, you know, kind of lining up. Again, all the circulation is going to tie right together with the existing campus. The admin, new library, and the new multipurpose and locker room facility, which feeds right up the hill. If that were to be expanded a little more, you'd see the gymnasium up here. So it's all connected, and everything's hopefully right where it needs to be.
As you're increasing the square footage of the blacktop, are you going to do anything to the surface of it as well?
Uh, yeah. Well, actually, we'll probably do a new seal coat over anything that's existing, if not just simply top it all new, so it'll all look fresh once we're finished. You know, we'll probably just put a whole new top down, because by the time construction's over, they're going to have beat it up so much that they'll have to. Yeah. So that's a good point.
And are those going to be stairs in three sections?
Yeah, these are actually existing stairs. Yeah, I should say that we rendered in where the existing stairs are right now. Yeah, so we're assuming those would stay, because I know a lot of students come from the upper level, you know, because their homes are up in that location.
I guess I didn't realize they had three of them now?
They do have three. Yeah, correct.
I never walked that far.
Yeah, we're thinking about actually taking out the third right here because that, you know.
Too far back?
Yeah, right now, that's, you know, this used to be hardtop back there.
Right.
But, you know, this used to be building, now that's building, and this, that used to be hardtop, now this is hardtop.
That's probably wise to take that one out.
Yeah, so we'll probably take this one out, because otherwise, it's coming right into the backside there, and we'll just finish it out. So again, that's what it looks like currently, and we're pretty excited about giving it the new, fresh look on the front side. Got a bit more work to do, but we're moving pretty quick, and we might be seeing some movement out there as soon as this fall, if things are, late this fall, if things work out pretty well with the timing of things. So. So I'll open it up to questions and comments.
So I just wanted to just make clear, we wanted to bring this to the board at this point, because we're about ready to submit some of these plans to the Department of State Architects, and we just wanted to make sure that you guys are copacetic with what's going to happen. I like to use my four-syllable words when I can.
(laughing).
But if, you know, there's any objections to anything, speak now or forever hold your peace.
I am so excited. I think it's fantastic, really.
Thank you.
It's, uh, it's nothing worse than just adds, put a Band-Aid on something.
Yeah, absolutely.
Or just try to fix something, and it's, this is really going to be the whole campus. It's beautiful. I think the students will be so proud.
Thank you.
I was just curious, and I think I know the answer, but with the locker rooms here in the MUR, are there no locker rooms in the new gym up there, or do they kind of have to do it both because the, that's so far away for their PE classes? How does that work?
So the existing locker rooms...
Won't be on tape.
I was saying, we've got to make it audible.
We want to make sure what you say is on tape.
So we're actually using both sets of locker rooms. Just the sheer number of students that we have going through there, we needed to replace the ones that were there.
Right.
In the existing multi-room.
Okay. I was just curious how that worked, since you usually do have them in gyms, and, okay? We have a lot of students to get changed for PE.
Yeah.
That was actually the only question that I had that came up.
I already asked my questions.
And I just think it's really cool, all those little things you think about when you started talking about making the little, you know, the library kind of match those new buildings. I'm going, geez, maybe I should have studied architecture. That's really cool.
It's fun. My favorite friend, not just my favorite friends, that doesn't include others, but I still stay close to my classmates. I love being around architects, and probably because I have been since I was in high school.
Well, thank you for all the effort of putting something together that is really beautiful.
Thank you.
And it really is going to enhance the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And there are no further questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Is that kind of the answer you want?
No objections, so, yeah.
No objections.
Moving forward.
All copacetic.
Copacetic, exactly. I love that word.
It's a wonderful word. Okay, that brings us to item three, the summary notes from February 8th, 2014, and Board Governance Handbook update for 2014. And we do have here some changes and additions to our Board Governance Handbook that, as we discussed on the 8th. Are there further questions or comments about those changes?
Dr. Douglas, did you mention earlier that you found...
I did, and I was just trying to see if I could find, find it again, because I went past that to look at other things. It was in the sentence about recognizing that there are lots of inequities in funding and so forth. It was early on, and there's a comma missing, or a comma, or an "and" or something.
Well, if that's the case, can we just...
Yeah, so I think we can, I think we can just fix that.
Like the meaning's changed.
And then, yeah, get it to me, and then we will do that before we publish this.
Yes, so, so that's, yeah.
Otherwise, you might go up and down on that thing.
Yeah, I can't, I can't lay an eye on it. Yeah, I will, I will find it and send that to you on it. It was just, it needed a comma or an "and" to make things quite make sense. Otherwise, did anybody have any substantive questions or issues with it? If there, did you have...
No, there was a few things I thought we had discussed that wasn't put in, but that's because of the summary.
Right.
It's really everything that should be there, but...
I thought it was a pretty thorough...
Yeah.
...coverage of the, the key points.
Yeah, and we had more, more things that we wrote down, but I guess they took out or they took some out somehow.
This is fine. Okay. And then, I would entertain a motion to approve our updated handbook.
Motion to approve an updated handbook.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? It is approved unanimously. Okay, we have some information about after-school sports program. Thank you. So, I take it that means Ms. Hopkins that you're going to...
I think so.
We already have this, right?
You might have it in your packet, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, it's part of the board packet.
But I mean, nothing's changed, in other words?
No.
We can look at the old one here.
I believe it's the same.
Okay, and I'm going to need to look at this one. I was asking, is this a change?
For several years, and it's been several years, we have a pretty extensive after-school sports program in our middle schools. And the information I drew from was probably the last year that it was a large program, which was 2007, 2008. And at that point, we had several sports at all three middle schools, and then some of, at some point, we also competed with some of the neighboring schools like Robertson. So there was flag football, volleyball, boys' basketball, girls' basketball, track and field, boys' softball, girls' softball, and some intramural sports. The cost for the sports in that particular year was about $27,000, but it only included transportation for track, because when we were cutting back on programs at that time, we eliminated the busing costs, which were really pretty extensive. For 60 games, transportation was about $28,000. So to do a similar program, let's say if we were considering doing that for next year, duplicating those programs and the transportation would be about $54,000. However, one of the things that took a fair amount of our administrators' time was supervision for these sports, because you had schools visiting schools, watching sports, and so it took a very chunk, big chunk of time on the days that there were sports games going on. So our role of our administrators has really changed quite a bit since then, and we have so much more responsibility for instruction now and the changes in, you know, Common Core, and we could go down the list of things. So we probably would need to add some type of supervision time, additional expenses and clerical expenses, too, if we were to do that extensive, or any sports program that was run through the district. What is going on now, Daly City Park and Rec has some programs with school teams. You know, not all our schools have a team. They also run teams that individuals can participate in and, you know, form a team that's not a school sport, a school-related team, like they name them after the school. And right now, there's girls' basketball and boys' basketball and some intramural activities, but the cost they're charging for those teams, they're finding, is not enough to cover their costs, so they're not certain what would happen in the future keeping those teams similar costs that they are now, or if they could even provide that again. What's going to come up later in this month, I'm going to meet with Daly City Park and Rec Denise Brown and some of her staff. Mr. Valente, Ms. Parcells will come, and one of our middle school teachers will probably join us, a PE teacher. And we're just going to meet with them to try to brainstorm some ideas of a possibility of working with them, contracting with Daly City Park and Rec to really oversee an extensive, oh, a sports program that would include our middle schools with team sports and maybe continue with some of the elementary. And, you know, in that kind of program, they would be asked to deal with the sign-ups, with jerseys, with the refs, coaches, transportation, overseeing transportation, equipment, you know, that kind of thing in any proposal they would come up with. When we spoke at cabinet, we were thinking it kind of made sense to start a little more simply the first year, instead of diving into, you know, lots of different sports to see how it goes. Maybe start with things that are existing now, with the boys', separate boys' and girls' basketball teams, and a coed flag football, and then maybe add another team, you know, if that's successful for the following year. So that was some of the ideas that came forward, but I wanted people to be kind of aware of the cost factors that were involved in our previous programs.
We already have an agreement with the, with the City of Daly City for recreation on things that are going on. And how is that going to, how's that going to fold into this? Because we have an agreement already. In fact, they already take care of doing a lot of things for Park and Rec.
Also, the day, the City of Daly City has shifted many of its programs over the last four years, at the same time that we've shifted many of our programs because of the lack of funding. And they've been able to maintain some programs, that programming at some of our elementary schools and middle school sites. So this is just exploring with them, how might we expand that and make it more accessible for more students? And we would be coming back with a final recommendation to the board sometime later in the spring. One of the things that has also changed in state law in the last couple of years is the responsibility or the extent toward which the district needs to take responsibility toward transportation, whenever transportation's provided as part of a school program. And back in the day, we would get parents to drive vehicles, load four kids in the car, drive them to the school down the street, and it was fine. You know, do your brakes work? Do your lights work? Do you have a driver's license, and do you have insurance coverage? Well, nowadays, there's an extensive list of things that must be checked for on every vehicle that's used for transporting students for school activity. When Park and Rec does the, they have different expectations that, you know, of course, they still check for some of the basic things, but it's not a school activity during the day or run by the school district. So that's one of the flexible, flexible options that, you know, can happen when, when we can work with another organization to help run it. We don't have our board polit, the board policy, I don't think it's in this, this round, but I just reviewed an update to the board policy, and there are about 20 pages on school transportation for activities, of regulations that we would need to adopt. And I just went through them, and I just X'd them out, because we don't have a transportation department, and we don't do that. Anytime our students travel, we get a bus, and at the minimum, as Ms. Hopkins shared, is at least $500 per event. That's usually what it costs to send our kids to the Academy of Sciences, or even to send them all the way down to the San Jose Museum, Children's Museum, or the Discovery Museum. It's about the same cost. Doesn't, the mileage is minimal, it's, that's the minimum cost, so. We're going to continue to explore this. There's a lot of interest in wanting to expand sports and sports activities after school, and we're going to explore what the possibilities are and see if we can come back with the recommendation for that.
Got a question about possibly purchasing vans and possibly paying for some of the staff to get Class B. So we don't have that, was it $491.40 every game? We have the one-time cost of the vans.
Yeah, so the vans are regulated by the same statutes and the same requirements as a school bus would be. So we would need to also, you know, maintain a mechanics department. We would need to get those vans inspected on a regular basis, if not daily basis.
Okay.
And, and so the cost of that is now, is at least probably two staff people...
Okay.
...to just maintain and be the mechanics for the vehicles.
Okay. This is when we look at partnerships, partnerships with the city, partnerships with the high school district. The high school district has buses, and we need to, you know, find out from them what we can do to expand, you know?
They are, they are, they are the company that we charter with first, so they, they do provide...
Wait, say it again.
They are, they are the company.
Oh, that we use anyway?
For...
Well, that's good to know.
We do, we do get a slightly better deal from them.
Okay.
But because they are a good deal, they, they don't have as large a fleet. All of those buses back there, many of them belong to CYO.
Yes.
They're, they're our second, second go-to transporter, transporters.
Yeah.
So what, how much do we pay Daly City right now? Are they running the whole thing?
Well, it's not, kind of, it's a weird situation. They use our facilities, and they do some, I think, the cleanup...
I just want to know how much we're paying.
No, no, they're...
A school team is about $331 for a school team, and that's why they feel they can't afford to do that. If individuals sign up on their own, which a lot of their league is run, it's over each, they vary in sports, but it's over $100 per student.
Yeah, that's too much.
And so we're, we're paying $331 per team?
I don't know if we're paying it. I don't...
No, I, I believe it comes from the families, but it's a lot less of a cost then.
Yeah, so that's kind of what I was asking, are we, are we paying anything right now to...
We're not paying anything.
No, we don't pay anything.
Well, that's number one. And then, how much of this $53,000 would be transportation?
Probably a lot, right?
It was about $28,000. About half.
Oh, what it says here, the...
Yes.
And then the rest would be for the administrative costs?
The referees, the coach, the stipends, actually, for coaches is probably the smallest part in a sense of all this. That's...
So jerseys, refs, coaches, and equipment.
Right.
All right. And right now, we're paying zero?
Yes.
All right. So then, the recommendation, you'll be asking us to come up with an amount that we want to pay the city, or are we going to split the cost? Are we going to...
Well, we'll have to figure out what, what, we haven't even started to talk about this. We've just set a date to meet.
All right.
So we will meet, and we will find out what kind of partnership we can establish, how do we do this? As Ms. Hopkins shared, the cost right now at the school site to a team is like 300 and some dollars, and that's not paying their costs to do it, so they're...
That's just to exist as a team, and then on top of that, they'd have to pay for the bus trip.
Yeah, so, yeah, so that's not going to, that's not sustainable for them.
Right.
And so we need to explore new ways of partnering with them, so that both organizations can benefit from this partnership.
Has anyone also thought about getting a Soundtrance to partner in this? Because all the buses go to all our, our schools.
Right.
We will look into that.
And then there's also a shuttle from Bayshore. I don't know, you know, maybe we can get a shuttle, too. I don't know. But I think Soundtrance should be involved in the conversation.
I'm skeptical about their...
The other thing is that Daly City rents, rents out, or some of their facility stuff, okay? So they make money on some of the stuff. And they actually rent out our facilities. We don't even have, we don't do that.
Yeah.
We need to find out just how much money are they making on all the stuff that maybe we can adjust that part of the budget, so we can have our kids get something. It's, I mean, it's, we have to look at it all. Look at it all. Because I do believe that our sports program has gone down, and the first thing we want to do is give our students the best they can have, not just find out that another high school in another district or in San Francisco's coming out and using our facilities and our kids don't have any place to play.
Right. In the meantime, also, because this may take a while, I still think that we should be informed, you know, like, what teams won the championships, and we could maybe acknowledge them here. I'd like to see who won the, you know, and the others, you know, students that participated, even if they didn't win, but...
Going on tonight, actually, championship game tonight.
There is?
Yeah.
With, which school? High school?
No, no, the middle schools.
Oh.
I believe it's San Wesley.
Should all be there.
Maybe that's why they come tonight.
Well, before we carry on any further here, I do have a couple of speaker cards to this item.
All right, that's good.
This is, this is way too vague for us to...
But we're not actually taking action on this.
I'm glad that it's even on the table right now.
It's a progress...
I'm glad it's on the table, but...
It's an information report, progress, letting you guys know what we're investigating and letting you know what will be, what may be coming, if it seems something that we could recommend.
Right.
Beautiful.
So I'm going to call Mr. Paul Hagan to speak.
May I allow Mr. Robin White to speak ahead of me?
Well, you want him to speak first?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll call this Robin White first.
May I have no objection?
I have no objection.
Okay, thank you.
First of all, I want to say good evening. Thank you for having us, having me here, and I appreciate everything you guys are doing. My name is Robin White. I represent a nonprofit organization called Youth for Fitness and Education. And pretty much, we were started in light of pretty much what we're talking about here, losing the athletic programs that our students had. I basically became involved with Ben Franklin Middle School in two thousand and seven, when I worked with another organization called Citizen Schools, I think some of you might be familiar with. And that's pretty much how I got involved in nonprofits. And then, as soon as I found out that the programs were going to be taken away from the school district, one of the things that I'm really passionate about is sports and education. And so going ahead and actually creating a nonprofit organization that looks at trying to facilitate and support those amongst our students, academic and fitness support, through getting kids to participate in multiple sports, getting them active physically. But a lot of what we do is try to mirror what a college program would be. Again, we try to take the aspect of, it's not just kids playing sports. It's about how do we take everything that a student does and really use that as a tool to get them, you know, to look at college as reality and motivate them. We have academic requirements that mirror what a college student have, study hall sessions that student athletes have in college, and really trying to put all this together and use it as a motivational tool. A lot of the kids that are in there want to play sports, they have aspirations, you know, you ask them, you want to play sports professionally in college, they'll all raise your hand. But again, it's looking at, how do we take that motivation that they want to have in the sports and applying that to the academic setting as well? And that's a large part of what we do, through the help of the teachers and staff at Ben Franklin. We've been able to help and support nearly two hundred students in various sports from, we have had soccer the year before, boys and girls basketball, other teachers have helped out with other sports like jujitsu and things like that. So really taking an aspect of, you know, how can we get as many students as we can, you know, one active, bring back our sports program, but also use it as a tool that can really guide students academically onto the path towards college. And one of the things that our organization is really looking at is how do we, you know, facilitate something that can create sort of a streamlined academic expectation that all the students can adhere to and all the schools can adhere to as well? And I know you're all still kind of in the planning process and are still going ahead and having your initial meetings, but that's one of the areas where we feel like we could help and support that as well, not just, you know, finding volunteers and coaches, which we do, you know, in terms, you talked about uniforms and things like that, and that's a large part of what we also help to facilitate with as well.
But buses.
Oh, buses, that's, that's another thing. Again, that's a tricky subject, as you talked about. But pretty much looking at, how do we turn our programs and make them mirror what, you know, not just a high school, but a college program would look like, obviously at a scaled-back version of it. But really trying to mirror this is, okay, if you want to go ahead, you want to play sports, you know, let's look at this and guide it in a way where this is a tool that you can look at to motivate you to go to college. And that's pretty much our biggest thing, you know, if the kids never pick up a basketball again in their life, you know, it's, it's what it is. But again, if they can just take the first step into college, that's what we want.
Have you received any grant money or any support? Because if we're going to need jerseys, refs, and coaches, would you be able to help fund some of that? Is that what you're saying?
Well, we, we do that right now with our program. Obviously, we're just at one school, but a lot of what we do is through fundraising programs and car washes. We host basketball tournaments at a minimal cost to students, basically just a way to go, to have them go out there, showcase their talents, have fun, bring the community together, families, teachers, staff. And then it's also a fundraiser, so we can pay for things like that for summer programs that we have, where we'll host a summer basketball camp. And each week, we take students to a university, taking kids to Stanford, where they actually get to meet the players, they get to meet the coaches, go see the teachers, and really just take them to these places, just get them on campus. Obviously, there's too much to go over, you know, in six weeks of a camp, or even in one day. But really, just to take them there and put them on a cap and say, look, this is a reality. You know, you're playing sports, these athletes are playing sports as well. Look at the opportunities that they have, and look at what you can have as well, you know, and this is something that we want to be able to provide and facilitate, you know, through an organized program, you know, and obviously it looks like you're on the way, and we just want to see how we can help.
All right, thanks.
Sounds like we need to meet Mr. White and his foundation into the conversation.
Put it down.
Yep, I figured you would. Okay. Now, Mr. Hagan?
Okay. All right. Hi, I'm Paul Hagan. I'm here as a teacher and as a member of AFT three-two-six-seven. And first of all, I'd like to speak as a representative of the union. We do have, in our contract currently, stipends for, that include stipends for teachers for doing coaching in after-school sports. And one of my concerns, and of course, is those stipends were effectively suspended when the money was, was cut, but we still have, it's still language in the contract and open to negotiation. So I know that this is just informational, so one of my questions would be how, how could we honor that commitment from the district in our contract language and have, you know, an after-school program that works for everybody? So that's my concern from that side of the table. I'm also speaking as a, as a teacher at Ben Franklin, where Mr. White has been working with our staff and our students for years. I'm bringing a few concerns that some of my staff have regarding the possible move towards having Park and Rec take, take over this after-school program, basically. We've, we've noticed that there's been, well, we're dealing with extra wear and tear, of course, on the facilities, and our new gym has been taking a beating. The floors really need to be taken care of, or even the, the lines are coming off, and I understand that that's not something that is currently planned, you know, that type of maintenance, but the wear and tear is taking its toll, just from the use that, that we get already. We do have, the, one of the other issues is that histori-, you know, kind of, I wouldn't say historically, but Park and Rec has been offering mainly basketball. One of the reasons, you know, that some of our teachers wanted to get involved in after-school sports, we have had teachers doing it even though they're not getting paid, because they wanted to offer a little more well-rounded girls volleyball, for instance. We did have that, you know, successfully this fall. So there's the wear and tear on, on the facilities, and so what responsibility does that organization have in, in helping maintain those facilities? The staff that uses those facilities at my school, the, the physical ed staff, have complained constantly about the amount of cleanup that they need to do when they come in on Monday after our facilities have been used. And that's a big concern. So those are kind of the concerns, you know? We would really like to see a, a well-rounded program, something that offers more than, than basketball, and gives all kids an opportunity to partake and, and learn about and try out different things. And then just, you know, concerns about what scheduling would look like with the facilities, you know, how we would schedule our needs as a school staff and, and with Park and Rec trying to share those facilities. So again, these are just concerns that I'm bringing to the conversation, and thank you for, for hearing me.
Great, thank you for, for bringing those points. Those are very important points.
Mr. Hagan, are you, are you saying that you would rather see the district have, take total control of the program and, or do less contracting? I'm not sure what exactly-
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure exactly without knowing. I, I don't know what, you know, what you're looking at, and I know that this is a process that's just starting, so-
Yeah.
But I do, I would say that I do tend to lean in that direction-
All right.
-at this point.
All right.
Okay.
All right.
Paul, I know you've been here kind of a long time, so-
Long time.
Yes.
Not kind of a long time, a long time.
Okay. Okay, so we used to have these programs after school, and they played against, the middle schools played against each other. And yes, Robinson School also, because it was nearby. So that was run by our, our schools.
Yeah, that's my, my understanding. I was not teaching, you know, I did elementary at that time-
Right, right.
But I do recall, yes, it was a, an active at the middle schools.
So, so I guess, I just wanted to clarify that, because that was my impression. So are we saying that the real reason that we're looking at something with Park and Rec is because of the buses only?
There's, there are a variety of reasons. One of them is the cost associated with transportation. The other one is the cost associated with management of the program and facilitating the scheduling of the buses and all of that. So-
Could we find out how did we do it before?
As Ms. Hopkins mentioned earlier, principals had different responsibilities ten years ago, and today, they're pretty full in terms of what they're doing. There's nothing that I would want to take off their plate to add this to them, and it would mean that a recommendation for that would come with a recommendation for hiring additional staff to help manage it.
Okay. And we have a speaker card for Luisa Santos.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Luisa Santos. I'm from Benjamin Franklin. I'm a teacher. I'm also the kind of co-athletic director. I work a lot with Mr. White, and I just wanted to speak to you guys that, you know, I really advocate for this partnership with Daily City Park and Rec. For, this is my first year being the athletic director for the girls' programs. I was a coach last year. I had to, I kind of, you know, was overwhelmed with all the work that I faced in the fall of having to deal with jerseys, paying league fees, fundraising, keeping track of the students academically, like, I took this all on voluntarily. Now that, you know, the teams are all settled and, you know, it's, it's, the workload has been, you know, coming at a steady flow, I am also able to be an assistant coach. Again, I do that voluntarily, this, yeah, I don't get paid to do this. I love it because I want to provide the students these programs. Ms. Brant, who is a teacher, volunteered to coach volleyball, and we were able to play against TRP and other schools in San Francisco, all through, through us, through each other. This wasn't part of the league. So the demand and the interest is definitely there, and we want to support that. Going off of what Mr. White said, just keeping the kids active after school, teaching them about wellness and health, and balancing academics with an extracurricular activity. To me, that's the big picture. To me, that's something worth investing in and partnering up with Daily City Park and Rec. Some of the things that I do, that me and Mr. White do, we do provide the opportunities to apply for a scholarship, like, like what was mentioned, the district isn't paying anything for league fees, the cost to play, basically. So I've worked out deals with, you know, families, payment plans and things like that. We've gotten our own jerseys out of house, we go through that. We take them to college games, especially locally, CSM, Skyline, City College of San Francisco. Many of them are JSD alumni, coming from Westmore, Jefferson, Tern, you know, all over. Just teaching them that, you know, this is possible, they're students too, they get academic support, and they play basketball, and they do really well at it. Me and Mr. White are also involved heavily in their academic involvement. If there are bad behavior grades, if they fall below two-point-five, it used to be two-point-oh, we raised it to two-point-five, if they fall below that, there are consequences. They can get benched, they, you know, could get suspended for a game or two, so, just so they can, again, maintain that balance. Academics first, you know? We, we strive, we strongly emphasize student-athlete. And I know I'm out of time, but lastly, I just want to say, you know, please, please support this. Kathy Stanley's at our school. She was telling me at lunch today about all the programs and sports they used to have, and it just got me excited, being just a third-year teacher there. So I highly recommend that we all work together with Park and Rec and bring sports back. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Santos. I just wanted to throw in one thing that was percolating through my mind when, when we're talking about all this, and, you know, I'm seeing us thinking about basketball and flag football, and I'm thinking about how many of us, when we were students, it's like, those really obvious sports weren't the happening thing, and I'm thinking, and you're talking about having volleyball, I'm thinking about track, which has, in a sense, that a track or a cross-country kind of team has a place for every student, even if they're the ones like me, especially in the junior high age, who couldn't move without tripping over my feet, whereas basketball, no, they weren't letting me near a basketball, you know? You know, so I'm wondering if we should actually be thinking less for these sports that are kind of everywhere, and more maybe for some of the sports like volleyball and track and cross-country that aren't everywhere? So just, that's just what was running through my mind. Thank you.
Okay. No, there's a lot of things I think we have to think about. I kind of, thinking back to what Paul Hagan said about being in a, being in the, a stipend in the contract that hasn't been used, and whether or not that's going to be advantageous to us, to at least have the teachers that are with students work with them even more so. There's a lot of things, I think, this is all like a lot, but I think we need to look at what we want to, what we think is the best to do, but let's not avoid anything that was discussed tonight. I think we might be able to do partnership with everybody, but maybe not just give the whole thing out. Because I, I, I don't want to give, I don't want to get away from the school. I think it's part of, it's part of the job that we used to do, was training our students, teachers already know them. I, I'd like to see that, and if they're willing to do it, and, and we can agree to a stipend that's, you know, appropriate, then I think that's, that's important, the students are going to like that. Instead of someone that comes along that, maybe they don't know them, you have to bridge that togetherness. So there's a lot of little things we have to talk about and think about. And then the other thing is that there are some schools that, in other areas, that actually have booster clubs that do the fundraising, so it's not going to be put on a coach and not be put on Park and Rec and not put on anything else, but the people that really are getting something out of it, which is the parents too, okay? Or the community. So I think there's a lot we can look at. It's a good beginning to get started, and let's, let's go for it.
I got a lot of thoughts on this. Couple that come to mind is parental involvement. If we can increase more parental involvement-
That's right.
That would, kind of, kind of piggybacking off of what Ms. Presley was saying, that can help take some of the pressure off, going off of what Dr. Douglas was saying, I agree with adding some of the non-mainstream sports. However, I still think it's important to have the mainstream sports as well, and if you keep up with local, the high schools, there's a direct correlation with the high schools in our area not doing so well athletically.
That's right.
And-
Start them young.
When the, when the sports were taken out of the middle schools, they don't get to develop those skills in middle school and carry that over to high school. So I think it's important to have the non-mainstream sports as well, but also to include the flag footballs and the basketballs, just because when they get to high school, they'll have those skills, and now, you know, they'll, they're not starting off behind the clock.
And when they first started that, started the foundation, Kids First, they sent out flyers and stuff to all of the parents, asking, what would you like to see done with funding that we can raise? And almost, I can't tell you what percentage it was, was sports. So many parents said, sports, and they would be willing to help and partner. So we never did get to that, because we, we ended up doing arts and stuff, which we needed as well. But I think that you will find the parents, they'll come out and do parent involvements and support something. So let's go, let's try to get a good plan to get started. Probably can't do everything, but take all the consideration.
I hope that what we can be looking at is, is a question of what to start with first and what we can add as we move forward with that.
Right, oh, yeah.
I will note that none of our, I don't think any of our high schools in the JUHDSD have football teams right now.
Jefferson and-
Jefferson and Ternova.
Ternova.
Do they? Okay, okay, so it's-
Westmore and Oceana used to.
Westmore, but Oceana has almost nothing, Westmore doesn't have a football team.
They have a new football field, so.
Yep, they got lovely fields.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing further to be said on that, let us move on to item five, reorganization of our district subcommittees. We do need to consider appointing a board member or two to each of these district subcommittees.
We're going to do it without Joseph, right? He's not, he's not here?
I think we, we need to, to get these settled, so I'm afraid we will have to move forward without Mr. Tidy. We can, it won't stop us from nominating him and assigning him some work. So I wanted to start by, you know, with the Wellness Committee, and I think that-
Did it say that we had discussion first?
Um-
It says here, let's see what it says.
It says that we'll consider appointing them. So I was going to suggest that we work our way through the list here and take, accept nominations, and we can discuss if discussion is needed on any particular point. I just didn't think that there was a whole lot of discussion on the Wellness one, because we know who wants that.
Okay, okay.
So I was going to just nominate Mr. Waters to serve on the Wellness Committee.
Second.
Okay. And all those in favor of having, oh, I should say, do you accept?
Of course.
All those in favor of having Mr. Waters serve on the Wellness Committee?
Aye.
I, okay, that was unanimous. The second one on our list is the Board Policies Committee. I think this is probably more a question of who's willing to serve.
Can I, can I describe a little bit about what that membership does? This committee never meets in person. What this, what this committee is, is sort of, provides me, as a superintendent, a perspective from a board member on potential policies that are being revised. So essentially, questions are asked or things are outlined, underlined that, you know, maybe don't belong, and, and those kinds of things, prior to those policies coming to the full board for consideration in the first reading. So what the requirements are, you would be getting a binder with, sometimes they're small, sometimes they're very full, with the expectation that they get back to my office within two weeks is the, the good expectation. That would keep us up to date. The individuals who've served the last couple of years, we've had two years of backlog. So it's been a pretty constant flow of binders back and forth. We're now just twelve months behind. So hopefully, by June, we will be caught up, and then it should slow down. It's just a quarterly binder that moves around.
Are these potential revisions that come from CSBA or they come from us?
Yeah, CSBA does provide us the template for the revisions. Administration goes through them first and revises them according to our current policy, tries to include any customizations that were made in previous policies. And then then, but the reason that they come for updates is because a new law was passed. So new words need to be included, new sections need to be included, essentially.
Does this include if we, as a board, want to change one of our own policies or bylaws or?
This would, that, if you would like to bring a policy up for consideration, again, you would let me know. And then we would include, that would go through the same process that every update goes through.
All right, same updates. You interested in that?
Not yet.
I am willing to continue serving on that committee. And I'm sort of hoping that I can persuade you, Ms. Chakil, to join me in this endeavor.
Is that a nomination?
Well, that's a, that is a nomination, if you're willing to accept it.
You get to second it.
All right, second. Second, accept.
Okay, so we have, at this point, a nomination for myself and Mr. Ali to serve on the Board Policies. Is there any discussion or no objections?
No objections.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? So that was also unanimous. Okay, the third subcommittee is the committee that meets with the Jefferson Union High School District and the local elementary school districts. Would you like to say a word or two about that?
Sure. So we, this committee has not met in the last couple of years. I've communicated with the high school district at various times to try to set one up, and it just doesn't seem to happen. There are some opportunities to meet in this coming year, just to learn more about the 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 transition of our students into the high school district and, you know, trying to iron out and learn about those processes as well as any other joint activities that we might be having with the high school district. We have a lot of joint professional development going on. We do have our annual joint band concert, and so trying to.